I will call to order the work session of the Wilson City Council of June 2, 2025, at 5:00 PM. I'll start by asking council members to review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Okay, are there any council concerns before we start our work session?
Not a concern, but thank you, Mayor. We do have a really heavy agenda this evening with a lot of important topics that we'll be discussing when we convene with our council meeting. Topics that require informed decision-making on the part of the council. Recently, we've had some tense discussions at budget meetings and council meetings, not only amongst the council, but from attendees, citizens as well. I respect the fact that people want to provide their opinion and their feedback, but I believe that we can do so in a respectful manner. I'm looking forward to our decisions this evening and our discussions that will carry them out in a way that what our public expects of us and what we can demonstrate for our community as well. Public policy decisions never come easy, this job. We knew it was not going to be easy, but I believe we can set an example for our community and carry that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council concerns?
No concern, but I'll have a comment. Councilor Chevlin, I was not present for the second budget meeting or the following council meeting, so I was not here, but I was able to look at both of those meetings and review those after the fact. And I would expect, and I'm hopeful for decorum, from all of the members of the council going forward, including no name-calling and professionalism or raised voices throughout the meeting, so I echo your concerns. Thank you.
Good. We will now move to the pre-council work session agenda. First up, I believe, is sewer and storm system development charge update.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neil and members of council. My name is Zach Weigle. I'm the city engineer. And with me tonight are John Gialducci and Zek Hazel with FCS Group. They're financial consultants helping the city with utility rate and SDC update for our sewer and stormwater systems. You may remember, back in April, we were here to talk about utility rates and go through the revenue requirements for each of those utilities. Tonight is kind of the second part of that work that FCS is doing and focusing on system development charges for the sewer and stormwater system. Just as a little background and maybe a reminder, the system development charge, or SDC, is a one-time fee that's paid for by developers, and that really is to fund capacity improvements for our utility and roadway system. So anytime we need to upsize a sewer line for service to a new area, or extend a sewer line, or add a facility to the treatment plants, that's a capacity-improving project, and that's what SDCs help pay for, so that helps ensure that growth is paying for growth. Another, just a reminder why we are updating these SDCs at this time. Similar to the utility rate study, the SDCs haven't been updated for quite some time. 2006 for the sewer SDC and 2012 for stormwater. So it's been quite some time. We also just finished and adopted new master plans for the wastewater treatment plant master, wastewater treatment plant facility and for the stormwater system, and those were completed last year. So each one of those master plans has a new 20-year forecast for what improvements are needed to allow continued growth to occur within the city. So that's why we're looking at the SDCs, to make sure that the revenue coming in is able to fund those infrastructure projects. So with that, I'll turn it over to John and Zek to walk you through the kind of detailed analysis on those SDCs.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Mayor and council. A slide, please. So as Zach mentioned, we'll talk about system development charges tonight for sewer and stormwater. The way we've laid this out, we'll touch on the methodology and some background, and then Zek will walk through the capacity part of the calculation, and then next, the eligible cost calculation for sewer and stormwater. Of course, feedback and input is welcome. One thing to keep in mind, the results that we show you tonight are what we consider the maximum legal charges that you could charge. The council's, of course, free to charge anything up to those amounts that you'll see. So also, as Zach mentioned, this is part of a much larger study. You saw the revenue requirement results a little over a month ago. Tonight, our focus is on system development charges. We'll talk at the end about sort of what comes next in this, in the study. But a little bit more about system development charges. Zach mentioned these are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development. At times, redevelopment pays these charges if they're increasing their demands on your system. SDCs by law are available for water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and parks. We can only spend the money on capital projects, and we calculate the charges based on the cost of capital infrastructure. Some of it's been built, some of it is yet to be built. To that end, they include both an existing component, that's called the reimbursement fee. That's the buy-in to any existing capacity that's available for growth, and they have a future component called the improvement fee, based on planned capacity-increasing improvements that will serve growth. One last thing, SDCs are intended to represent a share of the big infrastructure, system facilities, rather than local facilities. So we follow the law very carefully, ORS 223297 through 316. We also know of case law out there that's occurred over the years, so we're careful. And as I mentioned, the results will represent what we think are the highest defensible charges the city could adopt. This is a schematic of the SDC calculation. I mentioned that reimbursement fee is the buy-in to existing infrastructure. The way we calculate that, we have to isolate, and this is with the help of city staff, isolate the value or cost of unused capacity in the existing system, whichever one it is, and we divide that cost by the growth that it will serve, and that gives us our reimbursement fee. The improvement fee, picture a list of capital projects to be built. We have to isolate the capacity-increasing portion of each project that will serve future users, divide that total by the growth that it will serve, and that gives us our improvement fee. So together, they're intended to represent that share of infrastructure that will serve that new home or business. Some of it's already been built, and some of it is yet to be built, and that's your system development charge. One last thing before we get into the numbers. Our goal, as I've mentioned several times now, we're calculating the maximum defensible charges. The council has the option of adopting anything up to that total, and we're showing just schematically where the current SDCs fit in that picture and what the council's options could be there.
All right, so we'll start off by talking about the stormwater SDC, which is a slightly smaller version of the sewer SDC. It's slightly simpler, so this is a good appetizer for that. So here is the full stormwater SDC calculation, all on one slide. This top section of the table shows you the cost bases of the SDC. I want to specifically highlight especially the improvement fee cost basis, that first line of $14.9 million. Skip down a line to reimbursement fee cost basis, that's $14.6 million, and we got a couple of adjustments in there that I'll talk about later. The total cost basis is $27.3 million for capital that has been built and is available for growth, and for capital that remains to be built to provide for that growth. We then divide the cost basis total of $27.3, or $27.4, really, million, by the growth in stormwater equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs, of 7,745. And an EDU is just basically the average impervious surface area of a single-family dwelling unit in Wilsonville. That's about 2,750 square feet of impervious surface area. That's what we call an EDU. So dividing $27.4 million by the growth in EDUs gives us the calculated charge of $3,500 per EDU. So your typical single-family residents would pay that, and then commercial, industrial, those kinds of land uses would pay a multiple of that, depending on how much impervious surface area they're adding. So that's everything in one slide. Let's get into the details, starting here with the growth in EDUs. So the stormwater master plan provides an overall estimate of the impervious acres being added to the city, and that's that first row you see there, between 2024 and 2043. Now, not every bit of impervious surface area is something that you're actually going to bill for in your stormwater system. There might be part of the road that actually conveys stormwater. And so rather than just taking that as the growth in EDUs, we actually do a slightly different calculation, where on the next row, you can see the billable EDUs, we call it, which is the actual EDUs that you bill for in your stormwater billing system, and we grow that proportionally to the impervious acreage. And that basically means that we're trying to only capture the acreage that is actually being added by a customer and is not part of the stormwater system itself. So the total growth in EDUs, as laid out here, growing proportional to impervious acres, is 7,745 EDUs. So that's the denominator of the SDC calculation, and now we'll talk about the numerator, which comes in those two pieces that John talked about. The first one is the improvement fee cost basis. This is that forward-looking portion of the SDC, basically the cost of all the projects that need to be built for the stormwater system. Now, you'll notice by this graph, the orange here represents the ineligible costs, and the green here represents the eligible costs. So it's probably immediately striking to you that a lot of the plan is actually related to rehabilitation, repair of deficient assets, and only a very small portion, $15 million or 13% of the total project costs, is for the capacity that is actually going to be used by growth. So we are only charging for that small $15 million there at the bottom of this bar chart here. And then a similar story is occurring in the reimbursement fee cost basis. A lot of the stormwater fixed asset list is not something you can cover in the SDC. It doesn't have capacity for growth or for other reasons. So only that $14.6 million is actually providing capacity that growth will use, and so that's all that we're going to charge for in the SDC. So very small share of the total cost basis there. And then we've come back to where we started, with all the components now laid out, except for, you'll notice, there's a small adjustment there on the second line for $2.4 million. That represents the, $2.3 million. That represents the fund balance that you guys have already collected in your stormwater SDC, and so we don't want to double-collect or recollect for that money, so we go ahead and reduce that. We also add in some compliance costs there, $90,520. That's because the ORS lets you charge for the administration of the program and the cost for complying with Oregon law, and so that's where that $90,000 comes from. And so all put together, you end up with a charge, as I mentioned at the top, of $3,500 per EDU. All right, so here is the sewer SDC calculation. So now that we've done stormwater, this should come a little easier. We have, once again, a summary of the cost bases, this time in two tables. We have the cost bases in the top. Improvement fee, 98.7. Reimbursement fee, 16.8, for a total, with some adjustments, 115. So we didn't divide by what's called a meter capacity equivalent, or MCE, to get a total charge of $15,382. A meter capacity equivalent is a way of measuring different meter sizes, all relative to the size that is installed in a typical single-family home. So this charge here is the max defensible charge, $15,352, for a single-family residence. So you'll notice that this slide here says at the top, MCE method, and the reason for that is that with the sewer calculation, we went one layer deeper in terms of measuring capacity than we did for stormwater. So if we go to the next slide here...
Can I just mention one thing? I just wanted to note that these numbers are slightly different than what was in the packet. We realized that one of the meter size classifications wasn't in the original packet of materials, and it changed the numbers slightly, so just wanted to make a note of that.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, so unlike with stormwater, where we were measuring everything impervious surface area as measured through EDUs, for sewer, we're actually breaking it out into four different measures of capacity. The first one there is that collection parentheses flow, and that basically measures the, all the flow going through your collection pipes and booster stations and stuff like that. Then you have treatment flow, which is the flow that is actually treated at the plant. Then we have biochemical oxygen demand, or BOD, measured at the treatment plant as well. And we have TSS, or total suspended solids, measured at the treatment plant. So four different metrics of capacity. All of these are used to help define the needs of the sewer system, and so all four of these are going to be relevant for the specifics that we're going to charge the SDC with. Specifically, the city has some high-strength customers, and they might get more industrial, high-strength customers, and breaking capacity out this way allows us to really tailor-make the calculations to suit the needs of those individual customers. Okay, so this next slide, kind of a lot of numbers going on here, but this is kind of a proof-of-work slide, I guess you could say. So we're looking at flows and loadings from 2020 through 2045. That's the planning period for the master plan, and we're also estimating 2025 loadings, you'll see there. So we have collection flow, once again, measured in average dry weather flow. We have treatment flow, measured in peak hourly flow. BOD measured in max month pounds per day, and TSS also measured in max month pounds per day. We take those loadings, we project them into 2045 based on the master plan, and we also estimate 2025, to basically get the growth in those different loadings that we're expected to add during the planning period. So then, this second table you see here is how we might charge based on the growth in loadings. Now, you'll notice that we actually, for collection, we actually switched this to peak hourly flow. That's going to be something that's more easily available to an industrial customer who's connecting to the system, and so that is what we're using there. You can see we're expecting 7.5 million additional gallons being added to the system in terms of peak hourly flow, and that's true, that's how we're going to charge collection for these high-industrial customers and the treatment flow components. And then for BOD and TSS, you can see that we're expecting 9,922 total additional pounds per day in the max-month period of BOD, 7,851 max-month pounds per day for TSS. And a lot of numbers come at you, but really, the point of this is to divide the capacity into these four different components, so that when a new customer comes in, they might have really high flow and really low BOD, and we're ready to calculate the charge to suit their specific needs. So now we've talked about the denominator, we can go into the numerator once again, starting with the improvement fee cost basis. You'll notice that here, again, we've also split the project list into the different components of capacity, all right? So you'll notice that, for example, collection flow is about 50/50 related to growth. Treatment flow is a lot less, same with BOD and TSS. Overall, about 42% of the project list is allocable to growth, and that's inclusive of both the treatment plan and also a variety of different collection system projects that are going on. The remainder, so what's that? 58%, right, has to come from other revenue sources. So only that 42% can be allocated to growth. Okay, so the reimbursement fee cost basis has a pretty similar picture here. We went through the city's fixed asset list, and we assigned them to these different functions, and we found the capacity available in those different functions, and only about 17% of the entire fixed asset list is capacity available for growth. And most of that is in the collection flow and treatment BOD functions. The treatment flow and TSS functions are, as you can see here, not representing a lot of capacity available for growth. So that brings us back to the calculation. We have that $98.7 million for the improvement fee cost basis. We take out the outstanding fund balance of $550,000. We add in the reimbursement fee cost basis, and we add in some compliance costs, and that gives us a total of $115 million for the cost basis. Divide that by the growth in MCEs, gives us $15,352. This next slide, again, kind of a proof-of-work slide, but this gives you the SDC broken out into those four different capacity metrics. So if you go, skip down to the very bottom of this slide, you can see how it might be charged per unit. So for example, collection would be charged at 8.06 per gallon per day, peak hour flow to these industrial customers. And if you're wondering how this is actually going to look in practice, we got an example coming up in two slides, so maybe we'll get there first. This next slide is the schedule. This one is the one that should be different between your packet and what's shown here. This is the schedule of SDCs for a meter capacity equivalent, and this is what most of your residential customers are going to be paying based off of, and it's going to be mostly that top charge of $15,352. When you get into those larger meter sizes, this charge starts to go up quite dramatically. However, one of the advantages of the way we've done this is that you have that, you have the availability of calculating it by capacity metric, like you'll see on this next slide.
Quick question on that. There is a significant delta between the slide that was presented to us in the packet and this. How often do you believe you will find a customer, an industrial customer, that's going to be at that six-inch level?
There is one in the city currently.
Okay, so it's quite rare currently.
It's rare, very rare.
Okay, thank you.
There's not many meters over two-inch in the city.
All right, so this next slide is just an example of how this charge might be, might appear to a new industrial connection. So we've broken out the SDC by those four categories. You can see the unit rates there, and then I just inputted some quantities for this example customer. So 4,000 gallons per day in the peak hour flow metric, and then five pounds per day for BOD and TSS. You can see how this charge is calculated per capacity metric to get a total charge of $62,000. That, and like I said, the big advantage of this is that you might have some customers with really high strength and low flows, and you can use this to accommodate that particular customer. All right, and this last slide, I'll hand it back over to John to close it out.
Yeah, so for next steps, of course, after your questions and comments about this, we'll move into, back into the rate study and perform the cost of service analysis and rate design, and be back to present that to you.
So for tonight, we'd like to get your feedback. Our plan is to issue, there's a required 90-day notice before there's a public hearing on adoption of a new SDC rate. We'd like to issue that 90-day notice and then start scheduling stakeholder meetings with Home Builders Association, and there's an interested parties list that we maintain for changes to our sewer, our system development charge program, so start reaching out to the, and scheduling meetings with them.
You don't have to list everybody, but who are those stakeholders generally?
They're mostly developers, yeah.
So I have a comment and a question, and both of these relate to the staff report itself. You do, I know you mentioned that 90 days, and I would expect that Home Builders Association won't like any increase, and that comes to my other, to my actual question. So how does this increase compare to other cities in the region?
What I can say is that, you know, our system, every system is unique, has its own challenges. It's not really apples-to-apples to compare to other cities. I will say that storm is already, we are the highest now, and we will continue to be the highest, and sewer, it will, yeah, will go up. But I also want to, you know, want to mention that, you know, we have a treatment plant. You know, each city has a different, or agency has a different set of circumstances that kind of drive the cost of their sewer rate.
And so we're the highest, but then we'll actually be increasing it even more?
Yeah, that's correct.
Without getting into the weeds, what's the justification for why we're the highest? Is it because we have the treatment facility?
For stormwater, we're the highest because that's what our system needs. We do have some challenges that other cities don't have. We have very poor-draining soils within Wilsonville, whereas like somebody like Portland or Milwaukee have very well-draining soil, so they don't need as much infrastructure to deal with runoff from their facilities. I also want to mention that, you know, each city is in a different stage of updating their utility fees and their SDCs, so while the comparison is a snapshot in time, right? So everyone is at different stages and updating their fees.
Excuse me, councilor. I think Lake Oswego, aren't they in the process of having to adjust their debts to do a whole new water treatment plant? It's $200 million, I think, so we're not the only city going through this process. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, John, if you want to, you work with a lot of people.
That is right, and I know a few others off the top of my head. West Lynn, Oregon City, Milwaukee, you know, they have, they pay, new connections in those locations pay the local charge, and they pay an SDC for Wes, because that's who provides the treatment. Those, I know Milwaukee, we're working with them right now, their charges will likely go up. So all of these are dynamic, and they're, and I believe Wes is reviewing its SDCs or just did right now, so many of these will go up. The regional underlying charges will go up as well.
So does this become an impediment for future industrial and commercial development? Because our SDCs are higher, because obviously, like you said, you're going to run it by the Home Builders Association. Yeah, we're going to run it by them. I mean, that's not going to be a negotiation with them, obviously, but does, do these higher SDCs become an impediment when a developer or an organ, a company is choosing where to build a future commercial or industrial facility?
I think the obvious answer is yes, it could, but I would also say it depends. So we had Pacific Foods that was looking to move an operation from Towalt into Wilsonville, but because of our treatment plant and the way our treatment plant is set up, it wasn't feasible for them to do it for the way we charge for that service. So we might lose out, like on a food processor, but we would gain maybe somewhere else. But SDCs, they're not cheap, but the counter to that is, if you're not making growth pay its way, you're going to have to have your ratepayers.
I'm completely on board with you with that, by the way.
But yes, economic development is a concern for everyone, absolutely.
It will, it may, it may define the complexion of the type of industrial and manufacturing companies that choose to locate here.
Yeah, so somebody that's looking for a six-inch meter
Possibly, I mean, it's hypothetical, but...
May look at Wilsonville and say, eh, maybe not. Maybe we'll go to Malala, or Camby, or somebody that's a little cheaper.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
And we do have this TSS, BOD, sewer SDC calculation for high-strength users in place currently, and yeah, there are some, there are some certain industries that our treatment plant just can't accommodate because the cost would just be too high to accept their wastewater.
The only other thing I'll mention, too, is what we've actually seen, and we hear that, you may hear that from the home builders, we haven't actually seen it. Some of the highest SDCs in the region are also the fastest-growing areas in the region. Wilsonville's among them. South Hillsborough, South Cooper Mountain, and Beaverton have very, very high system development charges, and they're growing like gangbusters, so...
Yeah, because they, naturally, they need the most infrastructure, right?
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is Willsville Industrial Land Readiness, Wasall Creek.
Okay, next up is Willsville Industrial Land Readiness, Basalt Creek.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. My name is Dan Polly. I'm the city's planning manager. And with me this evening is Matt Lorenzen, the city's economic development manager. Associate planner Cindy Luxoi had planned to make this presentation, but was not able to be here. So you get me and I will do my best to be Cindy. So for this evening, really what we're looking for from the council is to share what we've learned from the consultants' studies and the discussions with them, as well as the planning commission discussion, and get your concurrence on really the direction of this planning project for the industrial lands on the north side of Wilsonville. So you, you may recall, back on the 19th, we had a work session and the council reviewed some background information there that really covered the rationale for the Basalt Creek, why it's industrial essentially, and the regulatory framework it sits in, as well as talked about the designated land use types, which we'll talk about much more this evening. Also got into the guiding principles that reflect some of those aspirations for the area. So this evening, we'll get to some key findings from these recent studies, which includes a market study and a land use study. It will address the continued viability of the proposed land uses from the concept plan in today's economic climate and over the next 20 years. And really making sure that we're able to align the city's vision of balancing industrial demand with having a distinctive and high-quality industrial area. So the city conducted an economic inventory and market analysis to gauge current market conditions and industrial land demand in the Basalt Creek area. A summary report is included in your packet as attachment four. And with that, I'll hand it over to Matt. He'll present a brief recap of the study.
Thank you, Dan, mayor and council. Just want to review a few key takeaways from those, the economic inventory and market analysis report. So as we look at the national and state trends, those are important because they influence the regional and the local market. Sort of all trickles down. So understanding those, the bigger picture helps us identify potential opportunities or challenges that may affect Wilsonville and more specifically Basalt Creek now and then as we look into the future across this 20-year planning horizon. So since the pandemic, the U.S. has seen pretty strong job growth, as you're probably aware. And we've even gotten to a point where jobs exceed what they were before the pandemic. Oregon has followed that same trend generally, but is lagging somewhat. Wilsonville, for its part, has, as you know, a very strong employment base. We have more jobs here than we have participants in the labor force. In 2022, the city had 21,383 covered employees. That figure stands closer to about 23,000 in today's figure. The largest three sectors that make up our, our employment base are manufacturing, wholesale trade, and construction. Construction would include those firms that have their headquarters here and who have job sites all over the region. So those sectors combined make up 43% of the city's employment and a very large share of the tri-county employment at 22%. So this focus on industrial jobs sets Wilsonville apart and really sort of highlights our role in the greater regional economy and therefore the importance of areas like Basalt Creek where industrial growth can happen. With regard to the office market, we know that that has been a different situation. Since the pandemic, the office market has declined nationally. Construction is down, there are fewer new offices being built, and even some of the existing ones are being repurposed into alternative uses because there's no demand. So overall, we can say that the office market is contracting significantly. The trends in the Portland region generally align with the national trends, experiencing high vacancy rates, negative net absorption, and overall low leasing activity. However, the regional office market is not uniform and suburban markets are performing better than Portland's central business district. And I think we've talked a little bit about that in the recent past as well. Our office vacancy rate has been generally low compared to the broader region, but there have been a few brief spikes that have, excuse me, large ending of leases that have caused large, but brief spikes in the vacancy rate. This, in a small market such as Wilsonville, you're just going to see those blips. When one lease ends and there's a transition in occupancy, it shows up as this temporary spike in vacancy. Rents, for their part, in Wilsonville have historically been lower than Portland, but as we've seen, declining rents in Portland were on par with where Portland is now in the office market rent space. So pivoting back to the industrial market, we know that it's fared better post-COVID than the office market. The industrial market is strong, although decelerating a little bit lately relative to the highs of 2021 and 2022. Portland Metro had strong industrial growth in those years, but we have seen a slowdown generally in the region. Investors and brokers, leasing professionals are confident in the long-term health of the sector, particularly due to significant investments that we're seeing come down from the federal level to the state in the semiconductor industry. Overall, Wilsonville shows a strong industrial market and we have very low vacancy rates and increasing rents. I recently presented some figures that showed that in the southwestern sub-market of the Portland area, we have the lowest vacancy rate of that entire sub-market. Just of note though, and this is important context for our discussion about Basalt Creek specifically, we've had limited industrial development in recent years, especially compared to, say, Sherwood or Tuolton. But this is likely due to the shortage of development-ready land supply in the city. If there's nowhere to build, then we'll see less development, obviously. So as we've spoken with developers, brokers, other economic development organizations, that opinion has held that the slowdown is not for lack of desire to be in Wilsonville, but rather for a lack of development-ready land. So as we've just talked about, Tuolton, Sherwood, and Wilsonville as part of that broader sub-market, Wilsonville is sort of lagging compared to those two cities, at least for the moment. And it is, I think, a brief moment. There are speculative developers that are seeking large sites and we see development of spec projects in Tuolton and Sherwood on, especially where there are sites that exceed 10 acres in size. And I would probably even stretch that closer to 20 if it's an odd shape. You know, if it's a nice square or rectangle at 10 acres, that's something to work with. But the more odd the configuration, the larger site you're going to need. Local developers are reporting that most of the industrial demand is coming from existing regional businesses rather than out-of-state companies. These local industrial users are primarily looking to expand or upgrade current facilities within the area. Many companies were seen, looking for space in this sub-market, are expressing a desire to be out of Portland and Multnomah County, citing some concerns about public safety and higher rates of taxation especially. Overall, Basalt Creek's longstanding vision as an industrial area aligns well with the current market trends, which show strong demand for industrial land, both nationally and within the Portland metro area. Despite limited development in Wilsonville relative to nearby cities in the recent past, rising rents and low vacancy rates indicate a robust industrial market, attractive for new development and especially speculative development. And with that, I will hand it back to Dan.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just off the top of your head, if you go back a slide.
Yeah.
What was, can you, if you know off the top of your head, do you know where the manufacturing and the Flex properties were built between 2019 and 2026 in town?
Here in Wilsonville?
Yeah, the ones that we're looking at on the chart here. I'm just trying to get an idea of kind of what's, what's been going up, just kind of what options there are that are out there.
Yeah, so we've had manufacturing, I mean, it all depends on how, which bucket it ends up in. And usually it's a third party like CoStar or some entity that's determining the category that it fits in. But what I can tell you is some of the most recent development that's happened, whether or not that's what's in this chart is a little bit difficult to tease out. But there's been two speculative projects in Coffee Creek that were kind of built as a shell, but have been ultimately used for warehousing and distribution. Precision countertops is of course under construction now. An owner-user situation, and we know what they do. Manufacture and retail their, their product and wholesale. And then Delta Logistics is under construction right now. That's going to be a little bit of owner-occupied as well as speculative use. Are there other projects that come to mind that you think?
I think those, you had the main ones, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of any smaller infill projects. Yeah, I think that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you, yeah, that's just, just curious.
All right, so the consultants also did a site suitability analysis, is what we called it. And its purpose was to evaluate three key representative sites that have, have a high opportunity for different types of development to support the target industries based on attributes like size, location, and constraints. So really wanted to understand what the different constraints across these different properties were. One objective of the analysis was determined based on the updated information reports and studies, whether the land use types envisioned in the concept plan continue to be the best option or whether refinements are needed to realize the vision. So this study was completed last fall by Eco Northwest. And again, there's a copy of this in attachment four of the council staff report. So you'll recognize probably this concept plan map. Wilsonville's portion of the concept plan that we're talking about is south of Basalt Creek Parkway and is intended for, again, these various industrial development densities, including high-tech employment, is the term. Again, we'll get to exactly what we're talking about here in a minute. So high-tech employment, light industrial, and craft industrial. The West Railroad area, which is shaded in gray, in the darker gray here, was not given a land use type. An additional study is still ongoing as part of the current project. So high-tech employment, so one, one of the sites we studied is, we called it the Green Hill Site, outlined in yellow in the aerial at the center of the slide. It's located in the high-tech employment land use type east of Boots Ferry Road along I-5. Some examples of development envisioned of this, for this land use type are included. On the left, this site spans 57 acres on 10 tax lots with only two owners. Its high proportion of undeveloped land, consolidated land ownership, and proximity to infrastructure, including transportation, is one of the most attractive locations in Basalt Creek for industrial development and I would even say the region. The southwest Green Hill Site could be physically suitable for a range of industry, including high-tech, supply chain, clean tech industries, advanced manufacturing, food processing, warehousing and distribution, and industrial business parks or R&amp;D campuses. Site suitability analysis really validated the uses originally envisioned in the concept plan for this high-tech employment site with the caveat, as Matt mentioned, that it's possible the amount of office space with the, with this shifting office market could make up a smaller share of the original, of the square footage than originally envisioned.
Is everyone envisioning where this site is located? I'm just curious.
Yeah, but I, I believe I know where it is, but I, it brings up a question. Is this adjacent to that new residential development in Tuolton?
Correct, directly south of it.
Does that create some challenges for us if we're trying to, even though it's in a different city limits, challenges from Tuolton because we're trying to put industrial right next door to a very large residential area?
Yeah, a couple considerations there. Certainly the design will want to consider that. There is, I mean, that is the Basalt Creek Parkway there, which will create a pretty hard edge at build-out. As well as, once you get past the Parkway with landscaping buffers that are just even the minimum required, but probably there'd even be more there, plus some topography, you're going to be able to probably buffer and screen it and have some separation there pretty good, just without much otherwise effort.
An example locally would be Mentor Graphics across from Ken.
Yeah, it's right, it's right next to residential.
Yeah, so. Yeah, there could be more logistics-type activity that would take place on this site than, say, Mentor Graphics. But to Dan's point, you're going to have a five-lane road in between landscaping buffers, vegetation, potentially even parking. Yeah, so, I mean, as you drive around Sherwood and Tuolton and Wilsonville, I think you'll find other examples, Mentor Graphics included, of industrial and residential neighboring well when the uses and the site designs have been designed appropriately.
Yeah, I think it appears more obvious on the, on the visual just because you can see all of those individual plots for homes there. Okay, I got it, thank you.
An example would be in Tuolton, on Tuolton Road, about 115th, 120th. On the north side, you have multifamily homes and maybe a few single-family homes. And then on the south side of the road, you have the industrial warehouses. And I don't see any problem.
Although, a comment, high-tech employment may have less heavy truck traffic than industrial and light industrial. So this may be primarily workers that are coming to work at the site for the high-tech, right?
It could be, or it could be, it could still be high-tech user or a combination of high-tech, like supply chain, which still has some high employment count, but also has some fairly heavy truck traffic.
Thank you.
Which, I mean, is also good for truck traffic because it's right next to the interchange, so.
Not to stop the progress of the presentation, but I, I think another worthwhile nuance here is that when the concept plan was designed, Tuolton's site was supposed to be industrial as well. But they shifted and Wilsonville stayed true to what the original vision was, so.
That was a long, very long planning process.
But Wilsonville stayed the course.
Okay, next, light industrial. So this is, covers a number of properties in the light industrial land use type, outlined in yellow on the aerial photo. And this is the existing part of Basalt Creek Parkway just north of the prison on either side of Graham's Ferry Road. And it's roughly 60 acres and 21 tax lots. And some envision, some land use types envisioned, types of development are included in the bottom left here. Really think 95th Avenue here for a reference point. So we didn't really study this because we're so familiar with it with like, as we've watched like the development on 95th Avenue and stuff. So we understand kind of how that operates pretty well in the current market. So while it didn't really get in depth for these properties, it did note that an approach supporting a wide range of industrial and office uses consistent with the concept plan and the economic inventory that was done up here is desirable. The approach really allows the market to determine the most appropriate locations for various business types while still prioritizing industries aligned with the city's employment and wage goals. This again validates the original, what was originally envisioned in the concept plan for the light industrial land use and its location. Next, we'll get to a slightly different one, which we'll, we'll have a kind of a targeted work session on this at a future date as well.
Dan, before you go to that, can you go to the previous slide really quick?
Sure.
I know we jumped over it quickly. I know that in that area, right off Basalt Creek, there's a lot of existing businesses.
Yes.
And some of them make the assumption that there's an acquisition that happens as it's developed out. Are there environmental concerns? Because I think there's, you know, some of those businesses that are currently in place there have been there for a long time. Have you looked at it closely enough to see if we've got any issues?
That would be a private matter between the buyer and seller. They would do a level one.
They would do a level one environmental, and if they found anything, they'd do a level two.
Got it. Thank you.
But it is a potential barrier.
It's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
So the craft industrial, so we want to do a site suitability analysis here, essentially it is different than what we have in the city here now. The area is outlined in yellow, and it includes roughly 37 acres, but yet only 14 of those acres are unconstrained. And so the yellow portion towards Boons Ferry Road is unconstrained from natural resources, and then a large portion of it to the west is in the Basalt Creek Canyon area and is not able to be developed. It includes, so along that Boons Ferry Road now, as you may be familiar with, our single-family residential homes. And is also located directly south of that residential in Toowallatin, as well as neighborhood, future neighborhood commercial in Toowallatin. So with that kind of constrained geometry and size, as well as proximity to Toowallatin, and that existing residential development that is fairly high-value and not anticipated to change over quickly. Its suitability for high-intensity industrial use, like you'd see across the street, really came into question and appears limited. So the site suitability analysis concludes that the area aligns with what was kind of assumed and thought in the concept plan, which envisions really a transition area here, where initially you may have home-based businesses or businesses in garage, or some existing shops and garages in that area, with cottage, small industrial or cottage industries, and then over time it can transition to purpose-built, mixed-use industrial buildings that are offer us, that are on a much smaller scale than, you know, large warehouses and such we're used to. So this, next, I will mention West Railroad. We did include this in one of our suitability analysis, just because we don't, it's kind of in that process as we study and try to understand this area more. It is a fairly large area, 165 acres, that are in large parcels, but there's limited utility and road access are kind of the big barriers here. And you can see it outlined here in yellow. It really indicates that based on its location alone, I mean, that it could really be suitable for industrial uses, however, the constraints of being able to get truck access and utilities there make it extremely challenging. So we're really, we'll be taking all that into consideration, kind of tailor the best use of this land into the future.
The challenge with West Railroad, there are many, utilities one of them, but as far as truck access goes, the really only viable access at this point is at the southern end of the property. And even that entrance and egress is challenged by the fact that there's a low railroad underpass that you're probably familiar with on Graham's Ferry, where you go under the railroad. It's not to industrial specifications, trucks have been known to get stuck under it from time to time.
Often.
So that would really need to be addressed in concurrence with any development of this property.
Yeah.
Theoretically, crossings could exist at Cahalen, where there's currently a cul-de-sac, but that would require coordination with the railroad, which is long and difficult.
And to really improve that undercrossing, because you start, it's really, you get a domino effect that gets into wetlands and grading and all these difficulties. Our initial estimate is like $35 to $50 million to fix that, so it's a, yeah.
Because it's not just lowering the road, you've got to go a half-mile in each direction in order to get low enough, so it's, it's a lot.
It's a challenge. So let's talk briefly about potential zoning, and we've talked about this quite a bit with the Planning Commission thus far. And so really, we, one of, kind of our opening study question is, is this city's existing planned development or PDI zone appropriate for this area? I mean, because that's the easiest, kind of lowest-hanging fruit. If it works for this area, rather than cooking up something new, might as well use what we have. Which, some benefits which we've seen from the PDI zone over time is it does support a wide range of industrial and office uses, as we see throughout town, and could be a good option for Basalt Creek in general to provide the flexibility and really try to facilitate that balance between market forces and prioritizing industrial uses aligned with the concept plan guiding principles. And so, one thought, though, that we're really looking at is that in addition to kind of that standard PDI, to look at a number of potential additions to maintain the desired balance here. First of all, evaluating limitations on low-intensity and large-scale users that do not meet long-term employment density goals and may use up land that would preclude use of the properties by other desired employment-generating development. Also determining appropriate regulatory strategies to encourage existing low-intensity uses, such as contractors' establishments, to transition to that higher-intensity urban industrial uses earlier. So see if zoning, I mean, it'd be a package of things to get that transition happening, but we really want to see if zoning can be at least a support to that. Also considering the creation, which we're leaning towards of a completely new zoning designation, because PDI really doesn't work for the craft industrial at all, to really, which would expand the range of allowed uses in that craft industrial to really allow that flexibility for the transition over time. In addition to that kind of base zoning, we've had that experience with the Coffee Creek Form-Based Code for a number of years now, and to take the best parts of that and spread it north is recommended in the concept plan. We're still leaning in that direction, and I think that should be considered.
So just to frame this a different way, I mean, what Dan said, yes, all of that. But to frame it a little bit differently, we're looking at implementing the PDI zone, but rather than try to create something new that creates some very finite or tailored short list of allowed users or land uses, we'd be looking at the broad arrangement of uses that PDI allows for, but then within these certain targeted areas, perhaps limiting certain uses to preclude ones that take up a lot of space, that don't have the jobs and the wages that maybe the community has envisioned for this area. So it's PDI with a few tweaks as the council and Planning Commission directs, is the current concept, with the exception of craft industrial, which would look different due to the factors that Dan outlined.
Thank you. So what did we hear from the Planning Commission? So, so main things is what came out of Planning Commission's work sessions is implementing the concepts plans, high-tech employment, light industrial and craft industrial land use types makes sense. Applying the PDI to the high-tech and light industrial areas with additions as noted makes sense. So essentially, all this stuff I've talked about is Planning Commission's on board with this direction. Also, we had a detailed work session with them on the new craft industrial zone, they had some great input, but really liked the flexibility that that zone allows on kind of, on those constrained lands. And their support of that extension of the Form-Based Code into Basalt Creek to create that cohesion of design, to create a larger industrial neighborhood over time. So with that, the questions that I put back to, that we put back to council is your thoughts, whether you concur with the concept plan land use types and continue to align with the city's vision, or is there something else we should be considering? And what other guidance do you have that, to guide us as we continue working with Planning Commission and our consultants to develop the changes to development code and other economic development actions for adoption later this year or early next year?
From my perspective, I concur with as what you present, as well as the Planning Commission. I think it's a good vision and should go forward.
Looking at your staff report, I know that there are barriers that we need to overcome or challenges that we have that are in place. Can you address, I know that you've got the timeline for, you know, where we go next in the staff report, but also can you address some of the challenges that you already have in the report and how we overcome these? Because I think Basalt and Coffee Creek are a critical part of any type of strategy we have as a city to generate additional revenue. And I would love to see this stay at the forefront of all of our development.
Do you want to talk infrastructure funding, or do you want me to?
Well, on the challenges, are there ones in particular that you're zeroing in on right now that we can speak to?
There were quite a few of them. Let me go to, let's see. If you go to page 46 of the packet, there are challenges along there, but let me see. Let me go back into my notes. Hang on, I'm going to find all my red lines. It would be page 64, page 10 of your report, 64 of the packet. So the key findings, how do we overcome the challenges? The existing contractors' establishments generate substantial income, reducing their motivation to sell or develop, redevelop. Relocation options for businesses currently occupying these sites are limited, creating additional challenges. And then thirdly, contractor establishments are unlikely to transition to higher-intensity uses without city intervention.
So not to be overly dramatic, but in two weeks, I'm bringing you an answer to your question. A land aggregation strategy for Coffee Creek that could be replicated in Basalt.
Perfect. I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to reading it.
Do you want the short version?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Teaser?
Yeah, like I said, didn't mean to be dramatic. With the previous council, we talked about the possibility of using urban renewal funds, not just specifically for, exclusively for infrastructure, but rather to proactively aggregate property where the private sector is not doing so. The rough concept that we'll go into more detail in a couple of weeks looks like using urban renewal for strategic acquisitions where a developer wouldn't be able to pay the price that the seller wants, and this is getting into the weeds, so I, as I said, I'd give you the short version. There's a gap between what a seller wants and what a developer can pay. Urban renewal could help bridge that gap, and then using a state program that we've already, that we're already eligible for and been approved for, we could seek reimbursement for the gap that we've put forward and recoup that over time once the job, the site is developed and jobs are created. So basically, the city would be playing the role of purchaser-aggregator and paying that premium, and then being reimbursed by the state to eliminate that loss, if that makes sense.
It does, and here's why I'm so excited about where we can go with Basalt and Coffee Creek. So in the past few weeks, I have road tripped through Idaho, Wyoming, Colorado, Utah, Kansas, Nebraska, and Oklahoma. And what I saw was a lot of industrial and manufacturing development everywhere. Obviously, that's mirrored also in the Sherwood-Toowallatin area. And it feels like we're missing a moment in time where, you know, that is something that is happening nationally, or at least in some of these areas, and I know that we're strapped for land, so to speak, where some of these areas may not be, but I do believe that it's a tremendous opportunity for us to be able to develop this out and generate additional revenue.
Yeah, we can talk more about this in a couple of weeks, but where you see, I can't speak for Idaho, or Utah, or Texas, where land is not as scarce as it is here. But when we think about Oregon examples where we've seen real economic development occur, in more cases than not than I can think of, it's been the city that's proactively shaped an outcome and had a vision and played a very integral role in shaping that outcome. It hasn't just, contrary to what you might see at face value, it's not just the private market doing its thing. The city has been very proactive in shaping that outcome. And so my bias, my opinion is that if Wilsonville wants to see the true potential of Coffee and Basalt Creek, we will need to do something similar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just thank you so much for your presentation. I agree, like the planned development zoning that you were talking about for industry area would make really good sense to give them flexibility on how they're citing the buildings and possibly what they're going to be using it for. Anyway, I think that you've done a really good job, so thank you.
I also had a comment. Thank you for bringing us up to speed, especially as newer councilor, council members. I concur with Councilor Dunwell, this is such an exciting project. So many cities would look at Coffee and Basalt Creek and say, "I'm not touching that." I mean, look at the, look at the geographics there, and yet we didn't. We looked at it and said, "What can we do here?" And that's what makes it so exciting. So not only the increased revenue stream, but to be able to provide family wage employment as well. You know, as we look at our previous presentation and perhaps the cost of homes going up because of the SDCs, at least we can have employment with wages that will be able to have people be able to afford those homes. Thank you.
And I had a quick question about the craft industrial area there. On page 61 of the packet, so the slide that you showed earlier, you know, it's obvious that on the east side of there, that's where kind of the main craft industrial house, micro deal is going to be. And then there's going to be an SROZ that goes down the middle, and here on page 61, it shows that as the constrained area. But then on the west side of that constrained area, it's, there's still craft industrial on the west side. And I'm wondering kind of what the mindset is behind, you know, you have this great natural barrier that could split craft industrial away from standard industrial on the west side. So why we're not kind of carving right at the west side of that SROZ as the edge of that craft industrial space?
I think this is a simplified map, and in reality, we would do that, that that would join the adjacent land on the east side.
Glad we're all on board.
I actually like the, I mean, I'm not sure how wide it is, but I mean, maybe trail area, you know, it's.
Sure.
Yeah.
In the future, we'll look at a refined boundary for sure, but I think that's a good observation. One other thing that we didn't mention in the context of this conversation is, as currently shown on the concept map, the light industrial and which was the other designation, doesn't matter, there's two different designations that go across property that's been aggregated by one landowner and developer at this point. It wouldn't be considered best practices to split-zone that property. So at some point, we'll be seeking direction as well, probably first with the Planning Commission and then confirming with the council which zoning designation should be selected. It wouldn't be best practice to divide it in two.
Yeah, what we've heard from Planning Commission and all that is like, yeah, whatever, you know, whatever the developer preference is on what they're doing, it doesn't matter much one way or the other, I think, because really, the type of development that's likely to happen there would go, could work in either one, so. But we do need to true that up.
And aren't we in a weird spot also because we're adjacent to some unincorporated, I think it's Washington County?
Yes.
That we're adjacent to, literally right across the street from?
It's all unincorporated.
It's all, oh, that's fun. But I also want to piggyback on what Counselor Cunningham talked about with craft industrial. I know you were talking about only 10 potential livable unit, living units for the work-life or work-live. Given that a lot of this was pre-COVID, is it thought as you're building this out and thinking through this that you're going to completely remove that? Or is that just sort of an intermediary step as you take a look at the greater strategy?
Thanks for that question, Councilor Dunwell. Two thoughts. First of all, yeah, it is based on the current reality that there are homes there and will probably stay there for some time. But also, in terms of housing and jobs, we see a future, particularly in this zone, and it may expand to other zones where there is more mixed use in terms of having it may expand to other zones, where there is more mixed use in terms of having either uses for the owner or employees on-site in industrial land. So like when we recently did some code edits, we actually added a new term in the code that's really about kind of, living units are accessory to like industrial or commercial use that are, you know, there's a backspace. So it's, it's really about the flexibility to continue to use the current residential uses, as well as the flexibility to incorporate living or have, you know, pay the mortgage to have both your shop and your home on the same property and not have to have two different pieces of property.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I would just wanted to mention on here, because we talked about the PDI zone, one of the things that just struck me as I was reading through the economic inventory concept plan and use analysis, it says, "It's crucial for Wilsonville to carefully balance its development goals for Basalt Creek with market realities." And I think that PDI zone really, to me, it represents opening that up to somebody who's going to come in and try to make as much money as they possibly can on that deal. And if they're doing that, then that should be a pro for us, too, I would assume. So as long as we're kind of making sure that we are looking at those uses that are going to maximize it for both parties, so.
Yeah, and which can go both ways. And just a bit of history is, I mean, the planned development industrial zone does have a history of like constraining uses beyond maybe even what the region would be required to, to conserve land for industrial uses. Example of that is, we're fairly strict about commercial uses in our industrial zone, more strict than some other jurisdictions, primarily so a bunch of commercial uses don't take up all the prime industrial land along I-5, and we're able to have that land for the job-producing, those higher-wage job-producing industrial uses.
Yeah, it'll be exciting to see what kind of stuff we're looking at when we talk about what, what guardrails we're going to put on that.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I think you got everything you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep moving forward. Okay, the work session is adjourned. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602H, legal council litigation to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We'll take a five-minute recess.